Good evening.
Good evening.
Mary Kilpatrick, through my presentation, Phyllis said keep it down to about an hour, hour and a half this evening. So hopefully that's okay with your schedules? Just joking. We'll hopefully keep it to around that fifteen minutes. Next slide please, yes, the agenda. Just gonna follow along here, I got some notes here as well. So we're gonna start with a safety moment, as we always do at StanTech. Safety is important and we want it to be in the forefront, both in our professional lives and our personal lives. And then we're gonna go through the preliminary review report sections from one through eight, starting with the introduction, going through the review of the development plans and the sewer shed delineation, and then looking at the population and flow projections. And then we'll get into the wastewater conveyance planning, the local wastewater treatment plant planning. We'll draw on some conclusions to be carried forward into the detailed review stage. So the safety moment this evening is nine ways to keep your kids secure at home. So I don't know if you have kids, if anybody here still has kids living at home. I have two daughters, one is four, one is seven. I am not going to keep them at home alone just yet, but as they get into that ten, eleven, twelve year old, get their Home Alone course, and even in through the teenage years, there's important things to think about when your children are home alone. Childproof your house. Is there, are the doors locked? Are the cabinets locked with your medication, your alcohol, et cetera? Secure your house. Do you have an active working smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector? Consider a security monitoring system. Have you checked those recently to make sure they work? If the battery's not dead? Secure your backyard, if you have a pool, or if your kids like to climb in a tree, make sure they know not to do that when no adults are home. Some rules with your children, set the rules. What are some guidelines? If you get the, if you keep them accountable and make them responsible for things, they're more empowered. Oh, mom and dad put me in charge of this, I better, better not mess up, or I better be cautious. Make a list of resources, make sure they know your phone number, make sure there's a trusted neighbor or secondary contact. Review basic safety skills. What happens if somebody cuts himself or burns himself? Talk about the internet. Of course, we know a whole bunch of bad things you can get into on the internet. Is there passwords you wanna put on? Give them something to do. Give them a task list, give them a to-do list. And prepare for the unknown. Talking about it brings a comfort level to everybody, both parents and kids. Any questions on the safety moment? All right, moving into the preliminary review report summary, again, a progress update of the master plan that we've completed so far. So, we know that the town has a discharge limit of a hundred and sixty-five liters a second that can flow into the City of Medicine Hat sanitary system. It's a fixed rate per the agreement, and that is going to pose a problem at some time when the town grows and surpasses that peak discharge flow. So in previous studies, the town made some progress. There's a wastewater study done in 2014 on looking at various items. And then, as I mentioned, in March of this year, StanTech was retained to look at the sanitary sewer master plan and what potential future options there are when the town grows and surpasses that a hundred and sixty-five liters per second. So as I've mentioned, there's two phases. This is a progress update on phase one that we're nearing completion on. Next slide please. So the first thing we looked at was a review, and you can see there on the table at the bottom, that is where the, the population, the future population is going to be likely built out, the east side, west side, or sorry, the east side and the north side. The west side is a mature development, likely no future population built out there. And then with that review of the development plans, design standards, we delineated the sewer sheds, and that then shows where the new sewer flows are going to come from. And then you put that into the model, so on the next slide, you put that into the model, and you're able to see, based on the future population projection, where the new sewer flows are gonna come from. Are they gonna come from the east, or the north, or the west, or the south? And so in this case, the future growth areas are the east side and the north side. So north side primarily industrial, and the east side is your, your prime residential development. So for the population projections, at the onset of the study, it was determined and agreed upon by the town to use a thirty-year design horizon. So population to 2051. Past population studies and the government of Alberta projections were looked at, including the 2018 Town of Redcliffe population study, and a growth rate of about 1.17% was selected over the thirty-year horizon, which would provide a population of eighty-four hundred people, eighty-four oh eight. So that's a growth of twenty-eight hundred people on top of the existing population. So that is consistent with past studies, a lot of research was done into that, was, was put into that. And then when we get, when we get that population of eighty-four oh eight, we then project the sewer flows from that population. When you look at your design guidelines, it has a residential population sewer flow rate of three hundred and forty liters per capita per day, but that is just for the residential population. The three eighty that's on the screen there, that is a combined liter per capita per day sewage flow rate that combines residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial. And it, as well, it looks in and accommodates an INI allowance, an inflow and infiltration. And that inflow and infiltration rate wasn't taken from the design guidelines, but it was taken and, and from the 2014 sewer monitoring, flow monitoring program. So in 2014, I think through ISL, SFE Global did a flow monitoring program where there's monitors put in the manholes to see what actual flow is coming through. And so we looked at that, we updated the model from 2014 to make sure it encompassed all the recent upgrades. And so we have an actual flow that's coming through, not a theoretical design guideline flow. So we're fairly confident that our projected wastewater is, is within the realm of confidence that we should have. So it's not way undersized, it's not way too conservative, way oversized, it's kind of in that sweet spot. And so then we, that, that gives us our total sewer flow in 2051 of thirty-one ninety-five meters cube per day. And so that is an average daily flow. How that relates to the one sixty-five limit that you have, so that's one sixty-five is the peak flow, and it is a liter per second flow. What the thirty would continue through the City Gate connection, with an added surge tank to attenuate the flows, so that in a storm event or in a peak flow event, that would be held back in the surge tank, and it would still be capped at the one hundred and sixty-five liters a second. Very aware that you just installed the surge tank, and that was just commissioned, that's on Ninth Ab. This one would take the flows from the north and the northeast developments, so a different area town, to attenuate that flow. So we've looked at both in the model, and this would attenuate all the north and northeast flows, or northwest, I guess, the greenhouse area flows. So that's option one A and one B. Option two is a new dedicated force main all the way around to the city wastewater treatment plant. This is one conceptual alignment of many that could be developed if this option is selected as the preferred or most desired option. The force main length could range from fourteen to seventeen kilometers. It would need to cross the South Saskatchewan River because the treatment plant's on the other side of the river. Option three is a hybrid conveyance option. So that is taking partial flows through the City Gate connection up to that cap, to a hundred and sixty-five liters a second, and then all the other flows above that would go through a smaller diameter force main around direct to the wastewater treatment plant. So those are the four options, status quo, surge tank, and City Gate connection, dedicated force main, and abandoned the City Gate connection entirely, and then a hybrid option. We'll get to the results here at the end of the presentation. So costs. The discussion on costs. So option one A, status quo, you can see is higher than one B, and the reason for that is one A, because we're increasing it, the flows now to two hundred and ten liters a second, would require conveyance upgrades in the City of Medicine Hat. So there's a letter from MPE on behalf of the city sent to the town that, that noted the value to those upgrades. We've inflated that to twenty twenty-one dollars, and that's about nine million dollars of that twelve million. The other three million is for a lift station and force main upgrades to take the new flows from the north and pump them down, back down to City Gate. Option one B is the lift station and force main and the surge tank as well. Option two and option three is that expensive force main all the way around to the wastewater treatment plant. Operating costs were estimated as well, and they, they consider operational labor, maintenance and renewal costs, energy costs such as pumping from lift stations, and they were projected out over thirty years, noting that these are twenty twenty-one dollars. These are not inflated throughout the thirty-year lifespan, they're all twenty twenty-one dollars. So you can see option one B is the least costly, and option one A is close second. Both using City Gate. Not sure if those are the answers you wanted, but a force main around town is, is quite costly. But we'll go through a triple bottom line analysis here shortly. So setting conveyance options to the side, then we looked at a wastewater treatment plant analysis. So two facets, a location for it and a technology for it. So the first analysis was the location. Four primary locations were investigated. You can see there on the screen, the southwest, the south, the southeast, and the north. Pros and cons, advantage of Langdon, Town of Fort McLeod, and Clearwater County. Town of Rocky Mountain now is just designing and installing one, so it is used. And then the next and fourth technology that was evaluated was the aerobic granular sludge technology. So this is a new, leading edge technology that is gaining traction in the province. And it's, it's a bit different, it uses unique features of aerobic granular biomass to treat the wastewater. StanTech actually recently conducted studies on the technology, and it's recommended for space-saving applications, not necessarily needed in the Town of Redcliffe, but it is a cost-effective treatment technology as well, and the City of Calgary Fish Creek wastewater treatment plant is piloting it right now. So those are the four technologies that were evaluated. We went out to suppliers to get capital cost quotes on all four of them, and we looked at it from a holistic picture, we didn't just take their, their quote to plop in a, a treatment technology. We looked at the civil costs, the site costs as well. So these costs may look high, there's contingencies on it as well. But if you look at the capital costs, they're all relatively the same. The AGS comes out as the, the most cost-effective, and then the BNR second. And then thirty-year operational costs were also considered, taking into account operational labor, energy costs being a big one, and that's what puts the MBR above the rest on, or higher, is the operational costs, is the energy usage. And so looking at the thirty-year cost for a local wastewater treatment plant technology, and again, a high-level cost at the preliminary stage, the AGS, the aerobic granular sludge option, is the least costly, and the BNR is the second. So from there, we did an evaluation of the conveyance and the treatment options, two different ways. For the conveyance options and the location options for the local wastewater treatment plant, a triple bottom line approach was used. So that considers economic, environmental, and social factors. For the technology options that were just described, we went on economic only, cost only, because the treatment technologies were required to meet the same design criteria. We went to each supplier to say, you must meet this discharge criteria. The odor was actually considered on the location options, and you'll see that, the different ratings based, based on social. And there's no considerable, yeah, so therefore there's no considerable difference in the environmental and social factors for the technologies. So on the conveyance options, we had the four options, and the one with the orange box around it. The conveyance option one B, continuing to flow to City Gate with a cert, an added CERPAC development. And then we evaluated the local wastewater treatment plant location options. Again, you can see economic at fifty percent, environmental at twenty, and social at thirty percent. And the north location proved out to be the, the most beneficial location, both with the conveyance option only, or higher, the, sorry, the treatment option only, or the hybrid conveyance treatment. And the big reason why there, you can see the north location for the treatment only was expensive. However, it proves out in the social categories and environmental categories. Imagine sticking a wastewater treatment plant right in your prime residential development? Probably not gonna fly. And so this considers odors, this considers, you know, where is it best for the future growth of the town? Where does, where does the wastewater treatment plant belong? Do you wanna drive by it? Do you want it right beside your school? Not really, and so that industrial area out to the north was, was the best option. Second reason why is we need to discharge the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant downstream of the City of Medicine Hat water treatment plant intake. To put it, to put it back into the river right before Medicine Hat pulls it out for the water treatment plant, doesn't make sense. Alberta environment is most likely not gonna let that fly. And so the north option has a direct route where the river bows out, it has a direct route right to the river to put in the effluent downstream of the city. The three south options would have to be rerouted back to about the Highway One Bridge, which is right where the intake is. So it's a little bit longer force main, I believe. So the north option proves out to be the best option, if the local wastewater treatment plant option in the next stage proves out to be the best. For the technology, because it was economic only in the, in the evaluation, based on having the suppliers provide the cost to, to make them equal on the discharge criteria, on the environmental, on the social, the, the two that prove out to be the best are the BNR, biological nutrient removal, because of its moderate capital and operational costs, it's proven reliable treatment that's commonly used in Alberta, and it has a relatively small footprint. The aerobic granular sludge is a, had the lowest capital and operational costs and a reduced footprint as well. So those are the two that we're recommending to carry forward into the detailed review stage. Next steps, what will we be doing next? So we will, we are gonna take the best conveyance option, that being one B, that being continue to flow through City Gate with an added surge tank and the hundred and sixty-five cap plant. So we're gonna compare those three, we're gonna do a risk analysis on them, a business case, as well as another triple bottom line analysis. And from there, we will develop an overall recommendation. And that recommendation will be, will be provided with an implementation plan to kinda get started on the next phase. Northwest on this side, on the south side of the highway, has to pump to the City Gate. And so if you're pumping, you may as well pump that to the north. So the north industrial and then the greenhouse northeast, northwest area would naturally go to the wastewater treatment plant. And the south and southwest, southeast, sorry, south and southeast would go to City Gate. And so it would kind of, it would be a split. So the treatment plant would always see, the treatment plant would always see flows, yeah.
Flows were mitigating flow emergency, it's not just sitting there not being used.
Absolutely. Yeah, specifically if it's a biological process, you need the food, or else, you know, you're providing nutrient, or you gotta get it inoculated again, and so yeah, it would always, it'd always see flows.
Any other questions? Okay, I have, I guess, a couple. When you were talking about the peak breaks the one sixty-five, or that is our peak. How long is that peak, and when is that peak? Like, on a normal given day, I can see, it's like same as power, you have your supper time, you have, you have morning when everybody gets up and goes, you have after supper when everybody gets up and goes. So there's a surge goes, 'cause of course, when you average, when you average our daily cubes, it's super low. We're talking twenty-three or four today and thirty-seven in the future, which is
That's right.
nothing. So obviously, we surge. So how long and when is the surge? And I think we also need the INI at the same time, right?
Specifically in that northwest area, the greenhouses. And so that could be looked at in more detail, but that is really where you'll see your INI peak. And so I guess it would be that supper hour, between that five and eight, four and eight PM, in a rainstorm would be your, your biggest flow. But even middle-of-the-night rainstorm, you'll see a lot higher peak flow than a dry supper time, for instance.
I think one of the charts in the original report showed a midnight peak flow because of the rain.
Correct.
And that was the other question I was gonna ask, is how long does it take that to flow through town? 'Cause it's not instant either, right? It's kind of slow-moving, you can run faster usually than
There's some attenuation throughout the town, absolutely, right? It falls to different places, and it has to make its way to City Gate. Unfortunately, I don't have that answer.
Okay, no, it's not important, not real important. The other question is, when you were pricing out those plants, okay, the membrane was, of course, the most expensive.
Yep.
And even in the operations, I think they were all, well, you were from twelve four on the cheapest to fifteen seven on the most expensive. But when you look at that, that's three million dollars over thirty years. That's not a lot per year.
Correct, yep.
And a membrane plant, that, all that water could be reused. We could be giving it to the golf course, we could be giving it to anybody that wanted to irrigate, as long as, like, we don't know about if we have heavy metals or anything, but we could give it back to ourselves. And I know nobody
Just the irrigation isn't quite there yet, I don't know how many we've done in, in this corner of the province, because irrigation is really popular here. But that is something that could be looked at.
Well, the greenhouse is using a lot of water, they could use that.
Yeah.
There's rules about using it on food product, too.
Yes.
Again, it's 'cause of the fear.
Yeah. And we've looked at that, they have their, their storm retention systems as well, and so they're pretty efficient with getting their irrigation water already from the storm systems.
And, and when you were factoring in the operational costs of those plants, were you taking out, say, the city costs that we pay today? Like, we're paying six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year to the city in cost. If we're running our own treatment plant with our own costs, we're obviously not paying that to the city. So were those factored in, or not?
Yes, yes.
They were? So this is over and above the city bill?
Yeah, so if, if we could go back to those slides, I'd like to point that out. So, yes, that slide there, so you can see that order of magnitude, twelve to fifteen million on the operational costs. That is no payment to the City of Medicine Hat.
Right, but right now
Yep, so if you go back up
So truly, we'd be taking thirty years, we could take fifteen million dollars, we're paying that already.
Yes, so if you go to a couple up to the wastewater conveyance opinion of probable cost, a couple right there, double the operating costs. The reason why is because of the, the rate that you're paying to the City of Medicine Hat. That is factored in to the operating costs in this option, 'cause we have to look at apples to apples, right?
Okay.
In the, in this one here, yeah, so it's at that, I think we estimated about sixty-five, sixty-eight five cents per cube. And that was, this, this cost is based on the twenty fifty-one flow. So not today's flow, but twenty fifty-one flow.
But using those old dollars, and I think you need sixty-five, I'm not gonna, 'cause I read this in a day, so I'm not gonna
And that's what the current agreement's at, but I also know there's been top-ups in the last couple of years as well.
Yeah, well, I, 'cause I asked Darren, and he's pretty sure we're paying more than that.
Yeah, the underflow
And again, those don't matter, 'cause that just changes the whole line across, so, 'cause you didn't factor in inflation, so there's no huge shift.
Correct, yeah. And yeah, and the stability or assurance of the City of Medicine Hat rate should also be considered. What kind of long-term agreement do you have? Can they come in and double that tomorrow? That should be considered as well.
Okay. And, and the reason why I was asking that is because I guess I kinda hate getting hit over the head, spending a hundred grand to get told the obvious. And the obvious would be, Meznap keeps treating our effluent.
Yep.
That's, that's obvious. And we shouldn't be spending money being told that again and again and again. But where we've struggled in the past, and to find out what is the palate for a long-term negotiation, and I don't say you can do the negotiating, but what are, what is the flavor to do that, or if it's even a possible thing, or get some big wacky numbers thrown at them or not? And, and then the other thing is, I believe it was in 2014, the province did a bunch of, they brought together nine communities to do a big sewer study, and Medicine Hat was one of them. And they were very proud of that report, and I think they even have it on videos and stuff, which I've seen. And, and they talk about their costs of the treatment, they talk about their costs of their system, and then they talk about their costs of growth, of expansion. And those costs come directly to us. As soon as there's capital costs on that plant, then they raise their cube treatment rate to us. So then all of a sudden, our seventy-one cents becomes a number that's no longer of value either. And again, we're trying to look into the future, we have to know those numbers, somebody has to pull those numbers from somewhere so we can actually make weighted real decisions. 'Cause like I, I think I said it earlier today, if I just go by your report, and this isn't an offense, but I don't have enough here to make a legit decision of a path forward. Because there's some numbers, I think, that aren't here, like there's Medicine Hat capital cost numbers that aren't here, and there's even your options three and, two and three with the pipeline, without including what that land acquisition cost, right away costs are gonna be. I mean, even though you already priced it high enough that it's not a ver, a good option, they'd be way worse by the time we did land acquisition and stuff like that. So again, those, you, you've ruled them out, so thank you, but we can't make good decisions on them because it's still not a real cost. And I don't know how we can come to something that gives us real cost to make real decisions on, because this matters going forward. If we get halfway into this, say we're gonna do the one B, 'cause by far, that's the easiest. We can build attenuation tanks, we're getting good at that, I think. Well, not too good. We got one working so far. And we gotta put a lift station in that, which is disheartening too, but there's not enough grade and distance. Unless we put it way, way out there, we wouldn't get distance to bring it back in by gravity. That, we're still, that would be the no-brainer. But it's still, what are they gonna say down there? And what are our costs gonna be on their next expansion even? And again, you have a department in Medicine Hat, so I'm pretty sure they're familiar with work that's been done in the last three years in Crescent Heights. I think possibly MPE might have been the engineers?
I think so, yeah.
They did do a bunch of upsizing, they got rid of some of their lift stations, they went to a lot more gravity. And I was even told, and it's just hearsay, so it's possibly not true, that that was also upsized to factor some Redcliffe in there.
Right.
But we weren't in that discussion, so I don't know whether they're waiting to have us come forward. And then they would have some, they would be able to have real numbers then, because they've already done the work, or not. So those are kind of questions that I think I would need to know to make an informed decision. 'Cause when it comes to any, well, I guess I would, when it comes to the actual treatment, I could go, I don't want the regular one, because everybody knows what those are. Whereas I believe some of the other ones, you can go with underground. Like, we have a two and a half million dollar treated storage tank, we could have a five million
This is a plan, and no offense, no offense to that.
If, if you're looking for guidance, it's, it's hard.
Right, but absolutely, and I appreciate those comments, I'm absorbing them, I wanted to take notes, but I wanted to listen as well. And so the first step, of course, in the opinion of probable costs, with the conveyance planning, option two and three, they didn't include land. Land can vary. You can, you might have to expropriate, I've done a lot of regional lines where land can vary from fifty thousand an acre to two thousand an acre, right? And so how to price that, is that in the scope of this, we can talk to Elise and Phyllis. What we wanted to do on the initial take was to find out if it is even an option, right? And if, if they were close, we probably would explore it and dig deeper into it and, and say, okay, they're close. We need to look at the real costs now, right? These are the high-level costs, they're not close. Do we need to dig deeper on option two and three? Probably not. And so that was the initial take, and, and we did that with the treatment as well. As far as disguising or hiding treatment plants, absolutely. StanTech has actually designed not treatment plants, but lift stations that look like a house. Like, you can honestly hardly tell the difference, the Keswick Lift Station in, in the City of Edmonton, it's in a nice neighborhood, it's got a garage door up front, it, it looks like a house. So yes, it is, it is there, but they do cost money. And, and especially covering a treatment plant for odor control, burying it, it And, and especially covering a treatment plant um for odor control, burying it, it, it all comes with money, right? To put a concrete slab on top. We know what our concrete sidewalks or driveway cost to do that on top of a whole treatment plant. Um, and so there, there definitely options. We are willing to take direction from the town in whichever way we wanna go. Um, but at this point, we, we found or what we think is the most cost-effective treatment options. It can go up, it can scale up, it can probably triple in price if you wanted to, to build state-of-the-art and hide it a bit, um, absolutely. Um, and so we can take that feedback. We'll discuss with Elise and Phyllis on, on which direction we wanna go. But the next step is really getting some of those answers for you and your council to, to discuss. So we'll, we'll take that back. Um, and any other feedback that you have on the report between now and the next month or so. Um, by all means, work through Phyllis and, and Elise to provide those comments and we will look into them and hopefully meet your needs.
Can I ask one more? Can I ask a question instead of just me?
Yes.
How, what is Alberta environment standard on upstream? From an intake? When you're, when you're applying for a license? What is the minimum? Because there's probably a minimum.
Yep. There, so it's kind of no set minimum, actually more, I think on the federal, um, um. Directed on the federal side. Generally, you wanna be in that hundred, hundred and fifty meters is kind of your mixing zone, I'll say. So when we do receiving water quality assessments and the effluent coming into a river, it will get you two force mains downstream of the intake, so.
But that's still going through city line too.
Yep, yep. And so if you look at this and compare it out, the, the two most cost-effective local wastewater treatment plant technology options being the B N R and the A G S. If you factor in that rate, they're actually, they're pretty close. It's eight million dollars apart based on that rate. And what's the stability of that rate? If that increases, you then the, the treatment and the conveyance options actually converge quite a bit. So.
And the other thing, I used to know a guy that worked at the C F. They have, they have the exact same treatment plant that we used to have. Sand filter and they pump up from the river.
Yep.
They treat almost the same amount of water as we do.
Mm-hmm.
They might be interested in. Water going right past their place. Instead of pumping up from the river.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's costing them. They have intake, they have to get licensed to draw, they have a whole bunch of that. And they treat it and they wouldn't be quite as fussy as somebody saying, I'm not breaking.
Yep.
Just there is, I think there's options out there for, for treated effluent.
Mm-hmm.
Irrigation, golf course or that.
Yep.
That would be the advantage, I think, to a plant in the north is they would be very close.
Yep.
Two kilometers if not away probably.
However, then looking at the reuse options with a plant in the north, um, I don't think it gets you away from installing an outfall into the river. Because of that reliability of the reuse and still the capital to go in still, I think, would have to go in, that infrastructure to outfall it. Um, rather than just solely relying on storage and selling it. And so I don't know, I don't know if it saves capital bucks off the top.
So they wouldn't be, even if somebody was a guaranteed source, there's no guarantee. Because that could, it could, it could disappear.
That's right, yeah, yeah. Fun fan. I will be leave behind uh hard copies of um the uh presentation as well as two hard copies of the report. Leave them with Phyllis there.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That was good game shot, did you think that was?
Yes.
All in favor, receiving for information. Opposed. Carried. Okay. Moving on into minutes, council minutes held July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move for adoption.
Shauna for adoption. Any questions or concerns? Larry or Jim, you got some?
No, I'm just get, check, catch, not on the computer.
Okay. Not seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, but is carried. And the special council meeting held August eleventh, twenty twenty-one for adoption. Shauna. Any questions or concerns? All in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Subdivision and Development Appeal Board hearing held July twentieth, twenty twenty-one for information. Eric? Alright, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And the municipal planning commission meeting held July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for information. Larry, you got your hand up? Alright, Larry. Any questions or concerns? All in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And the Riverview Golf Course Directors Meeting, Chris? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, but is carried. Bylaws, we have bylaw nineteen twenty-nine slash twenty twenty-one being the water conservation and restriction bylaw here for first reading. Jim, for first reading? Any questions or concerns? Chris?
Um, I know we have got emailed the Mr. Clots about section four not being. Descriptive enough, but uh. Looked okay to me.
Good.
And he didn't elaborate on what he else he'd like to see. It's my opinion.
It was a notification, right?
Yeah, so what else you want? You go and notify everybody door to door. That's gonna be affected by it. But what better is that?
Go door to door.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, when it's a block or two, you could not shut it down.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of first reading? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, requests for decisions, the twenty twenty-one A U M A convention meeting with the minister. This was tabled from the last council meeting, so. We left it on the table. Anybody thought of two great things to ask Minister Rick?
The high school. Nothing new or great, not new, but it is great. But yeah, it's for money.
Yeah, that's definitely one that we can ask for them.
Oh, sorry, Larry. I can't see that hand.
That's better.
Okay, sorry, Larry.
Yeah. I, I have asked it before and I guess the uh. The low water flow in the river right now may be another example of why we should have some sort of weirder. Some system in the river so that this area. Can sustain itself. Uh, we're gonna run out of water if this gets much worse and. The Alberta government might be interested in doing something like that. Because there's a lot of money for irrigation. There's a lot of money for stuff like that.
Any other suggestions?
So Larry's talking a different water intake.
No, he's talking kind of like Mr. Dearborn was talking about building a dam downstream to give us a higher level of water to catch the spring runoff.
Okay.
And then so when we're down to super low flows like now, we still have.
Water.
Water.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been a proposal.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's not bad. It's not, it's been asked before.
Yeah, but that doesn't, doesn't hurt to re-ask.
Nope, absolutely not. If we went together with the city, would that, would the province look at that more favorable? That's more a regional approach? Should be uh. Well, I guess we could talk to this minister about it and then. Go from there and maybe talk to the city, see if they like the idea.
Okay. Anything else? I still think if we talk to municipal affairs about a school, they're gonna tell us that's an education and a school birthday. Because they like to do that. If, if there's a quick answer, you'll get it.
We'll take that.
Still, still need infrastructure money, right? Put in the med ed's.
And that's, that's transportation and utilities, eh? They're the ones with the bank account, right? I, I'm just, I'm just saying like I, it, you can put that on the list, but.
Well, if we're allowed two things and we've really only got one, then barking about one of the other twos, we might as well take the opportunity to bark about it.
Okay.
Even though he might tell us we're barking up the wrong tree.
Okay.
If everyone's aware.
Yeah.
Still barking.
That's right.
Okay.
Unless we got a.
So.
Better option.
So that's the two and we have the third just in case. Way too early to talk sewer treatment.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I guess if somebody could make a motion that we try with those two. Chris?
But we need to bark at them.
Well, and we did bark a little bit.
Oh, we need to do more.
Yep, fair.
There's a new superintendent.
Yep. Pretty good.
Yes.
Doctoring it.
Yes.
Okay. I take it there's no more suggestions. Alright, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Alright, tax relief request. So request for decision on a tax relief.
I move option two on this.
The recommended option is option two.
Yep. Okay, Eric?
Could we even legally? Waive his. Could we even legally do it? This isn't the right way to do it.
But the timelines for that are long gone.
Yeah.
And, and then he can only argue this assessment. He can't argue the mill rate.
Right, exactly.
And there isn't a conflict about the assessment. Well, that's what Jim had just asked Larry and, and that's what I was trying to answer, but we have Elise here. Or we have Joel here. Because I don't think a three-inch line will hugely change the pressure at the main. Because what we're trying to do is just get it from the main to the building and, and keep town pressure versus otherwise we've got to put in a big pump, right? If we put it in a tank, then we have to pump it to the apparatus. Which isn't in place.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
But then we could have as much pressure as we want it.
Providing the reservoir never runs out.
Well, you could be filling it with the two-inch line like you are now as you're pumping it.
So that would be a big operational cost and a bigger capital cost. Any other comments or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion. Opposed. It's carried. Alright. But, but your concerns will be noted.
Okay, thank you.
If you're right, you get a cookie.
Okay, I get a cookie, good.
Alright, allocation of capital funds, request for decision.
Option one.
You just lost it?
I did.
Okay, Chris moved option one. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving on to policies. We have policy number fourteen, our condolence policy for consideration. Jim, option one?
Yep.
Any questions or concerns? How about? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And policy number one twenty-five, the authorization to sign grant agreements for consideration. Shauna?
I move for option number one.
Any questions or concerns? Anybody else want in on that? All in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And then into correspondence, we have from the municipality of the Frozone Pass, the opposition to Bill C twenty-one for information. Eric?
We receive for information.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And from the town of Claire's Home, read the code of conduct bylaw for information. Chris?
Information.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And from the town of Claire's Home, the R C M P retroactive pay for information. He did move.
Yes.
Jim?
Okay, anybody have questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And cerebral palsy Alberta, we're.
Then we're getting the Minister of Justice coming down here. It seems to me that we're kind of in conflict of uh. The provincial government. And like we, do we know enough about this or what they're trying to achieve? Or are we, would we even be around to see any of this? It, it just seems to be we're bombarded with all these, uh, we want the R C M P, which I have no problem with, but. We've had other police uh since I've lived in Redcliffe, we've had Redcliffe Police, we've had Madison Hat Police, and we've had R C M P. And uh, you, you know, I think the reason we're going with the R C M P is because they're cost-effective. But is that a, you know, we've never done a, a comprehensive uh. Evaluation of them. Is that what our citizens want? We just keep uh going for. Uh, approving all these things and I don't know that the citizens. Are going along with all this stuff. Maybe they, they are as well, but. You know, there are other options out there. The city of Tabor has their own police. Is cost the, the underlying and most important thing in this and. Are we getting? A good deal with the R C M P? Likely we are. But uh, what does everybody else feel?
I think setting up a Alberta police force, the initial cost is just going to be huge, but I also think that they're. Already got their minds made up and the whole. The thing that we saw on July twenty-second was just to say, well, we engaged with the public. And we went out and talked with them. I, I think it's, the vibe I got was it's set in stone already myself.
Shauna?
I am in agreeance with Chris. Um, I, I believe that this was their way of, the, the province's way of saying that. Change is coming. We have to get on board. Um, going forward, if that is the situation, I think that in order to make sure that all our residents and we are safe. That, you know, we might need to be proactive coming up with a plan for change.
I think they're gonna come up with that plan for us. I think it's gonna be, here it is.
Done.
But we still need to implement it ourselves.
Sure we do, yeah. We, we gotta be prepared for it, yeah.
And, and I think that's the biggest ticker, right? That we need to be prepared.
Yep. We do. But I, I don't think these letters are doing a lick of any good.
No, I don't either.
It's called not listening. Well, when he did.
Well, when he did come and visit, I think the reason why I gave him the history of the Red Cliff, the town of Red Cliff has never had provincial policing, and, and, and that's an anomaly through the whole province, because many, many people have had free policing for years, and they don't even know they have it good. Because they're not paying for what they're getting, and they may not be getting a premium service because of their rural areas and distance needed to travel, no, you don't have somebody ten minutes from your door. But you're also not paying, like, because there is federal land here. And I believe any indigenous settlements and stuff are considered federal land, so. I just think that, I, again, without a book, he's got a, he claims there's a book, and we don't have it.
Give us the book so we can read it.
Minister Madu said that the ministry is coming up with a plan, and that they will be presenting it to us in the near future, and including the financial end of it, so, I guess just waiting for his report is all we can do. And then, you know, us making our own plan on what we are gonna do.
And that whole tour was the cart before the horse, I mean,
Yeah.
to come out and say this is a wonderful thing, and you guys just wait and see the numbers and our plan, it's gonna be great. Well,
I think he was just.
Put it out there first and then say how great it is.
I think he was just warning us so that we can get our feet wet, so we're not shocked when we hit the water.
Yeah. I can just see his speech now, we reached out to all the municipalities, and we had town hall meetings, and
Yeah.
and it was very well received.
Yeah.
That's what he was gonna say.
My.
There were lots of people there, yeah.
Yeah, what I thought I saw there is he wanted horror stories. That's what he came for, he, he told us, you know, poor grandma there that's been robbed three times and the police never got there, that's what he wanted from our citizens, too. Because that's ammo in his pocket.
Yeah.
But nobody really stood up and said that, we did have a few people distant from any station that have had issues, but nobody gave him the horror stories that he wanted, so it kinda left him with not much to do that night.
Well, he avoided a lot of questions.
A lot of people were there for information, and there was none.
He avoided a lot of questions, you'd ask him a question, and he'd talk a lot for five minutes, but never touched your question. Guess that's why he's where he is, and that's where I am.
Okay.
Well, his pri- private comment to me was, how is he gonna sell this on our council? So, it's coming.
Oh, for sure, well, it's what they want.
Yeah.
Alright. So, Larry, do you want from this, do you want us to prioritize what we feel would be the most important things we'd be looking at in a police force, like, is it economic, is it social, is it environmental, is that what you're looking for?
Exactly, as long, and, and actually have, uh, some input from our citizens, too. Whether they would be willing to pay for more service, because what we're doing right now is we're providing a service, I think it's adequate.
Well, they are.
If, if you pay more, you get more. And, uh, basically, if people feel that they're not getting the service and they're willing to pay for it, that could be our fault, because we're not purchasing enough service, I don't know.
I don't know that we could purchase enough service to make that go away entirely, we're always gonna have that, of course. People will always, some small crime, people always make the issue and blow it out of proportion, that it's not safe to be here because my kid got in a fight at the park. But, that, that's certainly not a bad idea to do public engagement.
And if you, if you haven't got any, any incidences of any kind, you're, 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 you're over policing.
Yeah.
And you're spending too much money. So, there is a fine line between the two of them, and you gotta try and stay on it.
But with what Mr. Madu and the province have for a plan, spending more money on policing is going to help policing in Cypress County, not so much us.
Yeah.
It's rural crime that they were focusing on, which, yeah, that's an issue, that's fine, but I don't know that's the town of Red Cliff's problem. That's Cypress County's problem.
Nice guy in the sound box, you are.
I'm not the one going and doing the crimes.
We don't know, they're not caught. Okay, well, like I say, I, this was put on here, so, I, I just don't know what the end goal of, or result of this discussion should be. So, Larry, do you have a motion that you would like to make for this? Or do you wanna wait and see what the?
Is there a recommendation, Phil?
Just except for information, sir?
Okay. I guess.
And then I have a whole bunch of notes.
And then wait to see the Cooper report?
Are you good with that, Larry?
I tell you what's happening, is the audio and the video is breaking up so badly, I can't make anything out.
Okay. Well, we were wondering if we should just be making a motion to receive this for information, and, uh, wait and see what the report from the province really comes out as. And then, public engagement could start then.
Somebody texting on me?
I think he is struggling.
Oh, he's having a hard time there.
Eric, I got his number up there. Would it be okay with you if we received this motion for information for the time being, until we get the report back from the government, and we can revisit this issue at that point?
Larry, check your phone.
Does anybody have any questions?
Information.
Shauna already did that.
Oh, okay.
Yep, this is question period, or we'll vote. Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then, municipal manager report to council for information, Eric?
Will receive for information.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Got anything in there? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then we have the landfill graphs, the five-year average versus the twenty twenty-one, Larry moves for information? Anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then, important meetings and events, Shauna?
For information.
Okay, anything more to add, something we forgot? Alright, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Do we need a recess?
Yep.